Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Well, we're gonna pull number three, just so everybody knows that, on the D action items. Pull number three and then you approve the agenda, how's that?
I now may.
To reapprove?
Reapprove, and I got a second on the reapprove, all the favors.
Just say yes.
Yes, that's fine.
What do we do?
We don't need a roll call on agenda.
Completely pull it out? Pulled it out?
Yep.
We can pull it out without a roll call.
That's fine.
No, I mean we need a roll call to start the meeting, don't we?
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Beth.
Nelson?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Rex Mink?
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
Yes.
Guess I'm just trying to get done, because it looks to me like we got a lot of hay on this thing.
Bring it up.
Yeah, we're just gonna move to German, no. Okay. Code of ordinances changes, Jason, you wanna just give us a brief overview of what you got?
Ah, yes.
Please.
In front of you, you have the list of changes, my review of it is, like I mentioned last, council meeting, thanks Dave, that the rough draft is back, so right there is, this is how I did it last time, I don't know of any clearer way to do it, other than just listing the sections and what's being changed in each, so it's given to you now, I guess so you can look them over, and if you have any questions or offer any suggestions, you can call me.
So are these your suggestions or the state of Iowa's suggestions?
Well, they're all listed there, I have them labeled, directs legislative, the model changes and the city changes, as you go through them, I marked which is which, and either a short little explanation of what has changed in it, and there aren't so many of the CCs that aren't already ordinance changes that have already been passed in the last five years, there are a couple that are, I mean, proposed changes that either came from the departments or myself, and the reason for those changes, there's an explanation in there of why, I don't know how in-depth you want me to get into them now, these are here for you to look at, I guess the next step in the process would be to, probably at the next council meeting, we have to set the day for a public hearing.
Yep.
And then the March 3 meeting, have a public hearing on these.
Now which ones came from you or department?
Ah, it'd be the CCs that aren't, I mean, if they were an ordinance that's been passed in the last five years, I'd put that, added by ordinance, number, whatever, if we go to, I'll find one that's... Number 28, it's page four, 28 parking regulations, that suggestion actually came, it's been around for years, and it actually came from the street department, I included it this year, you know, at times, the street department has difficulty cleaning alleys in the winter time, van sanitation sometimes has difficulties getting through alleys, you know, trees, overgrown bushes, yes, but it's also vehicles that are parked in alleys, and the way the ordinance is now, it's allowed, as long as you don't take up more than 10 feet of that alley right away, so if you have a 20-foot alley right away, you're left with 10-foot and then trying to get a snowplow or a garbage truck through it. So it's just being proposed that we make those alley rightaways no parking.
So, Jason, on the CC ones, the city ones, are we creating any issues, are we, are changes creating what we believe are problems existing at the present time, are we gonna have, all of a sudden we're gonna have a bunch of people getting upset because something changed here or exists?
Well, that's why, none of these CCs, you know, the ones that say added by ordinance, those are already changed and approved by the council, okay, if they don't say added by ordinance, then they're proposed, okay, they're not, they're not, you haven't voted on those, they're just proposals, so I mean, that's why they're, you look through them, and it's, if it's something you don't think should be pursued, then, I mean, we can take them, take them out of there.
Okay, like on 28, you're talking the alley, alley rightaway, there are areas, there are alleys in town where there are parking areas adjacent to the alley, for even a private business or a public, we're not gonna have any issues with any of that, we're just talking the alley rightaway.
Just the alley rightaway, whether it's, most of them are 20, I've found some that are 18 or 16, so it's just that rightaway part.
So, but if they have a, if they have a garage or something off the alley, that has to be out of the rightofway anyhow, and so if they're parking on the same parallel line as their garage, they're fine.
Yep.
It's just not into, don't have a row of cars beside the garage into the alley.
Yep.
Okay.
It's not always the case.
I was gonna say a tailwind car.
Sometimes their garage is encroaching the alley, so it's not always off the alley.
Yeah, you don't go by all garages are correct, so.
Right. But I mean, obviously, if the garage there, it's already there, it's a large enough structure that the snowplow can see it.
They've been missing it.
Yeah.
So far.
At least we haven't heard complaints.
But all you're looking at, Jason, is taking out the paragraph that you've lined through and add in the one sentence.
Yep.
So if we don't like the one sentence, the paragraph is still there.
You can, yeah, you can keep it the way it is.
But, but that's, that's all you're changing, it's just the paragraph.
That's all, that's, I mean, yeah, what's, for those, it's just a proposal now, I mean, you can...
But, but you're giving us the current language too, so we can look at that and I think the thing to do is to, council will take it under advisement, bring up your issues at the next meeting. And that's 365 days, right?
The parking?
Yeah. I mean, well, because we've been talking snowplows, so just...
Oh, garbage trucks.
I understand that, but I'm just saying that's 365 days, okay, good enough.
And then, um, one other thing that's not included in this is, we just had a two-hour meeting with Bolton Mink regarding your airport, and as part of these code changes, we will be bringing forward to you a new revised airport zoning ordinance, and so, they didn't have it with them today, so as soon as they get that to me, I will get it out to each of you, and I'd like to, since we're going through this process, I'd like to have your consideration of the airport zoning ordinance as well.
Sounds fair enough. Could I ask if this takes place after, not the next meeting, because I'm gonna be gone, I think some other people are gonna be gone? Are you just gonna set the hearing at the next meeting?
Yeah, the only thing we do with the airport ordinance is the same thing Jason explained here, set a date and time for a public hearing. So, yes, you'll be back by the March and we'll deal with it then.
Good enough. Jason is, have you addressed the issue that's with the letters and the sidewalks and the carriage sidewalks, because if that's not in here, it is?
Doesn't, no, that's next on my subjects to talk about.
Oh, I didn't know you had two subjects, I'm sorry, okay, I didn't know you had two subjects, okay.
Yep. We can go to that, it should be, it's not listed on your...
It's under citizens, because citizens are in the audience, so we figured that they're gonna get to talk to.
It should be general discussion B1A, why did Jason feel the need to increase the attendance at council meetings?
Okay, go for it.
All right. None of you were aware of it before I sent them out, but last week I sent out letters to owners of properties that have sidewalks, either directly next to the street or there's a small gap, the sidewalk's close to the street, I referred to them as carriage walks in the letter, and that was simply because that's how it was explained to me 20 years ago, that's what they were called, did you have a copy of that letter, an example of it, you also have a list of property owners that have contacted me, and that list is longer than that now, but, and also a letter from a resident who wasn't able to attend today, so she dropped off a letter yesterday, what that letter was, it informed those property owners that I was gonna begin enforcing the section 136.03, thus requiring those sidewalks to be cleaned of snow, the reason is also explained in there, I tried to make the letter as thorough as I could, but I didn't want it to be a huge, long thing, but I tried to explain in there why I was doing it, but it basically came down to, you know, I thought about it, and I need to enforce the code as it's written, because right now, there's a discrepancy in what the code says and what I've been told and what people in the neighborhoods have been told, there's a difference there, so, but if we want, I feel that if we want to exempt those sidewalks, that it, we should change our code to reflect that, that way it's, it's there for everybody to see and it's easier to enforce, not trying to enforce a policy that a council or a planning and zoning commission or a city employee started years ago, I wish that when the exemptions were made, they would've changed the code along with it as they went, now, I, you know, I, I understand, and I believe everybody here understands, and most of the people that got the letters understand why that policy started, at least, you know, I do, when I bought my property 20 years ago, I have a sidewalk like this, okay, and I was told from day one that the city's not gonna make a shovel it, so don't worry about it, and the reason I was told at that time was, you know, it's just like everybody's supposed to clean their sidewalks, and it's, it's not fair to people with these types of sidewalks that you have to shovel the snow that falls from the sky, just like everybody, but you also have to shovel half the street, the length of your property, that the snowplow puts up there, so that's the way it was explained to me and why it was done that way, why I didn't have to shovel, like I said, I don't, you know, I don't know where it started, I tried to look up if there was any motion passed by a city council or anything, but I couldn't find anything in what I looked at, I mean, that's not saying there isn't something there, but, so, that's why the letters went out, I felt I needed to enforce the code as it was written, and, you know, I didn't, whether I thought it was right or wrong, I, you know, it wasn't that I'm hired to enforce the code as it is, not enforce some off-the-book policy, or expect, expect property owners to understand, you know, try to explain to them that this is what the ordinance says, but, you know, we got a different set of rules for them, so I guess what I'm suggesting is, if we're gonna keep that policy of these types of sidewalks, don't have to be shoveled, for whatever reason, I suggest we change the ordinance to read that way, so everybody can read the same thing and understand it, so, that's my say now, plenty of other people, I think, that wanna speak to the issue.
Yeah, and I forgot to welcome everybody in the chamber when we started, but this is the citizens' conversation period, sidewalks is not on the agenda, so therefore it's on the agenda right now, if you wanna speak to it, come up, state your name, address, and your point.
Pat Warner, 629 North Lynn Drive, when we got our house 34 years ago, there were no sidewalks in front of it, we were told that the top of the block had the curbside sidewalks, so they continued that down our block, we were told at that time that, we asked this specifically about the snow removal, and they said that they were gonna have a plow that would have wings that would drop down and come along the sidewalks and clean the sidewalks off, and in 34 years, I've never seen that plow come through my street, but we have been very good about trying to keep those sidewalks clean, but just this last time, we cleaned them once, my neighbor cleaned them for me, I went out at 7 o'clock at night when the wind was down and cleaned them again, the next morning, the plow came through and I had probably this much snow, no way could I get my snow blower through that, now that happens each time that it snows, because we are getting the snow from the street, and I know the neighbors up the street, I know there's neighbors that are elderly, they're widows, they have to pay to have this done, and they might have to call their person in three different times to clean this off, where if you had a normal sidewalk, you might just be cleaning it off once, and like I said, we were told back then, I don't know, I mean, when they were put in, we were told that we would be exempt to, when the snow was so high, that we wouldn't have to, you know, scoop them, and like I said, we've tried to keep them clean, but there's just times that we can't, so I'm just thinking that we should still be exempt from doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Merlin John Shipper, 413 North Lynn Drive, I received a notice that I was in violation of the sidewalk ordinance, I got a little torrid of snow blower, and I have been doing what I could do over the years, I enjoy living on North Lynn Drive, I like the sidewalk where it's at, but this year, the first snowfall we had, there's a lot of ice and snow, we had huge chunks of ice and snow, looked like, almost like plaster, but it's big stuff, thrown up on my sidewalk, so thick and so heavy that I couldn't even pick it up manually and push it back into the street, so I left that stuff lay, I left the sidewalk the way it was, and over the course of about 10 days, as the sunshine began to soften it up, I went out and began to bust it up with a pick that I have, and I carved out a three-foot section and left the rest of it from the middle to the curb to the, to the street, I left that alone and gave that to the city of La Mars, where you could store your snow, the second snowfall came and I did the same thing, I went out there, I had that little three-foot section, I carved out a three-foot section, I blow it towards the street, and I go out into the street and I go out 10-foot from the curb, and I blow the snow back toward my curb, so as to protect myself from the snowplow coming up and blowing that stuff back up again, and it worked out quite well, I just had a little bit of snow on my sidewalk, you're already catching my gist, I will not throw the street stuff into my yard, anyway, the snow, the way I had done it, I had myself a little three-foot path, you had your two-and-a-half foot, and then you had three-foot out into the street to put your snow, when that snow melted the way I was doing it, the neighborhood realized that the way I had done it, they hadn't done theirs, which I didn't care, when that snow melted, I had a 30-foot section of ice and snow, a foot wide and only two inches high, I was that close, having done mine, versus those who don't do theirs, and then I met a guy named Jason. Friday, January 30th, Jason sent me a letter and said I was in violation, I hadn't been doing my sidewalks, and the neighborhood guys, we had a good laugh out in the middle of the street, they said, you, you're the only guy that did them, and you got written up, on Sunday, February 1st, after, remember Saturday night, we had that big snowstorm, I was out there at 8 o'clock in the morning, I thought I'm gonna have to jump on this, because we had no snow on the sidewalks, I had a brand-new sidewalk to work with, and I began to cut out my three-foot path, from behind me, coming from the east, was a snowplow, I continued to blow this stuff in the street as I always have, he slowed down, very polite about it, so he wouldn't break both my legs, but he put that snow on me, up to my knees in snow, after he left, I blew a fuse, I went over to my neighbor's place, he got out, I said, get your four-wheeler out here, get your snowplow out here, and I want this whole thing opened up and everything in the street, he did as I directed, I said, all right, now with my sidewalk's wide open, the best I've seen it in years, I said, now we're gonna go out in the street, we're gonna take that snow 10-foot out, and we're gonna put it up against my curb, gonna clean that stuff up, we're not gonna leave a mess, and we did, and I stood out there, and Scott, you couldn't believe how beautiful that looked, the street was clean, my sidewalk was clean, I had a nice mound of snow, Monday morning, I went outside at 8 o'clock in the morning, that snowplow had gone by, and the stuff that I had packed, I mean, it was, it was perfect where it was sitting, he took and shoved that entire works back up onto my sidewalk, and the way I had packed it, it was so hard and so packed, I was back to the first snowstorm, and I could barely get myself back to my little three-foot path, but I got it, I'm back there again, but what I'm gonna tell you people today is, I don't know what's going on or what you think about this, but I've come to the point to where I've caught, you gotta know me and Scott knows me, I'm gonna go back to my little three-foot path right there by the grass line, I'm gonna shovel a two-foot path on my lawn, this took Jason by surprise a little while ago, so now I got five foot, and when the snowplow comes again this next winter, this winter, next winter, whatever, if I can't get through that stuff, I'm gonna leave that stuff lay until I can, and you can walk on my lawn, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next, Merlin, who's next? Anybody else wanna speak on sidewalks? State your name and address, please.
Ron Bruiser, 534 Evelyn Drive, we've been in our home for 14 years, and this last snowstorm, after I got the letter in the mail, was the first time I ever moved that snow, and like the rest of us, I think we're all under the understanding that we were exempt, and if it comes down to it, I mean, we may have to move the sidewalks, so we get rid of this problem, or put it in the laws that were exempt, or another possibility that I keep brought up, we'll just move over and blow path on the lawn and leave it sit there, you know, it's, the snow's gotta go somewhere, and after the snowplow rolls it along the blade, gets it all aerated, you can't move the stuff hardly, especially if it's slushy out, I mean, I guess, we, as taxpayers, already pay the city to clean the walking path, if people need to walk, I suggest that's where they do it, and there's a lot of, up, you know, we're in Evelyn Drive, Ina Gatz is in my neighborhood, everybody pretty much knows her, and there's no way she can move that snow, and I just think it should be exempt and move on from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Um, I don't know if, go ahead, Pat, go ahead, Pat.
I had a letter from, I had a letter from Linda Drennan.
Yeah, we have that.
I probably have had about 18 calls on this one, literally, 18 calls, about 10 of which or eight of which I initiated, but out of those calls, only one person, only one did not say that they were under the impression we were exempt, I've been there for 20 years, I had people in those 18 calls cite city past employees who had told them this, and basically, it was bottom line was as, Dave, your father, Wayne Shipper, when he was code enforcement, his name came up as having told people that these properties were exempt, Bob Lang's name came up, that these properties were exempt, I also heard about this wing on the plow from several of the people who called me Pat, I'd never heard about some wing on a plow, but I had always heard we were exempt, my realtor, when they sold me our house 20 years ago, said we were exempt, so, there's no question, and I think Jason used it, there's 230 properties, 260 properties?
A little over 250, I said.
Right, so there's, there's 250 property owners out there that have been under this impression, and I'm assuming 250 property owners out there that have never gotten a ticket for the past 40 years, because one lady on my block said she's been there for 43 years and she was told by a builder that they didn't have to, so I think it's, it's pretty evident that it has been the rule, and I agree wholeheartedly with Jason, we need to get this changed in the code and just make it official, because he can't pick and choose, because out of everybody who called me on this issue, Ina was one of them, out of everybody who called, they said, what are we supposed to do, and I said, clean them for now, I says, clean them, because quite frankly, he can't pick and choose, but we need to get this changed.
I think it makes common sense to, to exempt those, but then maybe put something in the code that says, we will not allow this in the future, we have future, in other words, don't increase the issue, keep the exemptions to the ones that are presently have the curbed sidewalks, but make sure when we, when they get building codes and that type of thing, that we have an understanding of where the sidewalk should be going.
And then one last thing that I wanted to say was, I live on Greenwood, it's a pretty, pretty quiet street, a lot of people walk Greenwood Avenue all year round, but mainly in the summertime, and it was pointed out to me by one of my neighbors, that in the summer, they never see anybody on the sidewalks, they're always on the street, so, you know, just add that into the pot of, I think we need to get this changed.
Given what you just said, are sidewalks needed when the rightofway isn't sufficient to accommodate a sidewalk?
Yes, I mean, there, there should be enough rightofway, you're talking on future?
Future.
Yeah.
With setbacks, I think.
Future, when somebody does a development in the future, builds a home in the future, then they have to meet our current sidewalk code.
Because there's setback requirements?
We do have sidewalk requirements, and, you know, they just need to have that offset as part of the requirement, but yes, sidewalks are needed.
And I think if they make the setback, like I say, the code says now, there's enough room between the, between the property line and the curb to get the sidewalk away from it.
I don't see it being an issue in the future for new developments, in fact, it hasn't been for developments in the recent past, because we say you have to have so much rightofway, a street is normally 31-foot wide, there's usually space for sidewalks, in the past, not always the case, because I can think of, where I live, on the one side of my property is South Greenwood, the property or the rightofway line, property line, is right at the back of the curb, so my sidewalk on that side is on my private property, and that's just the way it was back then, it's, it's a narrower rightofway, and that's where the sidewalk get put in, but I don't see it being an issue in the future, it'd have to be written, you know, for those current sidewalks installed, you know, and maybe up until a point that they get removed, and for some reason, I don't know why, we'd ever expand the rightofway or make them, put them on private property, but, I mean, it may have to be written that there may be an out, just like we did, I know in the past, we've allowed, if a tree was in the way of where a sidewalk is supposed to go, which is 16 inches off of the property line into the rightofway, is where the sidewalk is supposed to be, if a tree happened to be there, we've allowed people to keep the tree, but put the sidewalk around the tree, but then the day comes that that tree dies or gets removed, then that sidewalk is supposed to be straightened and put where it's supposed to be, I mean, you could put something in there for the sidewalks too, but I'm assuming all of these streets, North Lynn and South Lynn, Lombardi, all have a narrow rightofway.
Right, and, and the new subdivisions don't, but I, I think it might be an opportunity to put that in the code, so that there is no misunderstanding, that if I have the opportunity to put that sidewalk anywhere in that new, you know, my lot, make it up sure the understanding is that you stay a foot inside the, outside the property line between the, between the property line and the curb.
And I can think of, it wasn't that long ago, '06, '07, probably '07, along 14th Avenue Southeast, when the, when we went through the whole sidewalk issue again, making properties that didn't have sidewalks, put properties in, or put sidewalks in, up there, it was an issue of, it couldn't go where the code said, because of the lay of the ground, so that all those sidewalks along there, most of them, got moved to the back of the curb, because that was the only place that was graded proper to put a sidewalk, so there's an instance where the city basically told them property owners, here's where the sidewalk, you have to have a sidewalk, and here's where it's gonna go.
But in the future, like I say, if you're, you wouldn't have that issue with the grade if, if they fully understood where the sidewalk was supposed to go.
Well, actually, we have 12th and Central Avenue, that property that sits right there by Fire Station Number Two, and we're saying, we're gonna put a sidewalk there, so if in fact, we do move forward and we say to that guy, he has to put aside, he's an example, somebody we would say, but you will be exempt, you will join the exempt group of not having to clean that, because we're making input right up against 12th, we would be...
We would be initially making him put it up right against Twelfth.
Because of the grade issues.
I think we'd all agree it's a solvable problem. We'll take it back and get the ordinance changed.
I agree.
Anybody got any, anybody else in the audience before we stop the citizens? We don't wanna leave anybody out. Because it's under citizens, because it's under general discussion, we can't actually take action at this meeting. But as you're hearing us, it'll be on the action item for the next meeting.
So what are their instructions between now and next snowfall, Jason?
Is, Jason gets all the calls?
Well, I've told some of them that I've spoken to, I've told, let's let it go to council and do what you have been doing in the past. If you've cleaned it, clean it. If you haven't, then leave it. I'm not gonna go out and start writing down addresses and finding people. Okay? Until it's, let's find out what the council wants to do and then we'll go from there. I've also told them that once a decision is made, then I'll resend out new letters explaining what that decision is to everybody who got the first one.
And I know in twenty-one years of sitting here, I, I think it's come up a couple times. And we just have assumed that it couldn't be cleaned. But I don't think we ever took action, that I remember.
Yeah. And even if they have been cleaned.
In that time, right?
Even if they have been cleaned and if we end up with an impossible situation like we've had in the last couple of times.
We have to somewhat use common sense on this for the next couple, three weeks until we get it somewhat resolved. Because even if we put it in the ordinances, it's gonna take more than a, a single reading. Has to take a surger read, right? But if we're moving on that pass, you, you guys will follow that knowing that we're gonna get to the end.
Oh, if you're gonna put it as exception, I assume we're gonna put it as part of this grouping.
Exactly. But you still gotta go through that more than a single.
That'll take a minimum of a month and a half.
Right. But, well, we'll tell the residents.
We'll be into spring before. Unless we expedite it with, with the first reading.
Right. But what we're telling the residents is if it's gonna go in here and we're all happy with it going in here, then they don't have to worry about it because it's gonna get done.
Right.
Correct. So forget the letter. Right.
And one thing I think we should clarify, I do like Mr. Shipper's novel approach to a solution, which I think is great. However, for anybody that heard him say that he pushes his, blows his snow out into the street, the only way, reason that he gets by with that is because he then returns it back. So for anybody thinking, just blow your snow out into the street, that's not allowable.
You can't stop at step, step one. You gotta do two steps to have that be allowed.
That's a, Delana, that's a good clarification.
Well, cause you kinda stop hearing what, after you want to hear.
There's a code section that makes that activity illegal.
Yes. So, so keep in mind part two, which was move it back out of the street. But I did like your novel approach. Nicely done.
Okay. One more chance. Anything else for the citizens that's not on the agenda items? Otherwise, we'll move on to the thumbs up awards. Anything, John?
Nothing.
Clark?
Just congratulations to the Business of the Year. I wasn't able to go to the Chamber Coffee or the Chamber Event Saturday night, but Bike Central, and I really wanna just tout them a little bit. Those guys have really stepped up in the community and promoted BMX, the Frosty Cross. They've really, really, really become a huge community activity. And that, I think, is really commendable of that group and that business. So congratulations.
Thumbs up.
You know, thumbs up to the citizens that take the time to make calls and do so in, you know, a very congenial manner. And, you know, we do actually do appreciate hearing from everybody. So, thank you.
I'll pass to you. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, it does take time to be here. It does take time to make a call. But obviously, in a lot of cases, it helps us. Because we may think we know something, but we don't know nothing until somebody calls us sometimes. So, we'll move on to the consent items. Approval of the regular minutes and the special minutes, list of bills, renewal liquor license, Walmart, Times, Country Store, Convention and Business Bureau recommendations. And we did not decide to award all the monies this year. We, we held a little back in reserve in case something comes up. Engineering agreement for Crescent Ridge, two thousand and twelve wastewater treatment facilities improvements, CDBG, Main Street, Besad Rehab Project Award Bit. Any of those we wanna talk about?
Got a question on five and seven.
Okay, let's go for five first.
Engineering agreement. Scott, were we gonna, was the intent to actually award a bid at this time or get a scope of what the cost of engineering would be?
You asked me to get an engineering scope and cost, and so that's what's before you today.
Okay, but if we sign it.
You're not approving the.
Proceeding, proceeding with it?
Proceeding with to construction. Because we're gonna do that first phase in their contract, preliminary design, coming up with the options.
Okay.
And then we'll revisit it at that time. Now, I have revisited with Slowfeld on that. Instead of a fixed fee, it would be hourly with a maximum not to exceed. And there's a big difference there because if we stop partway through, cause you don't wanna proceed.
Yep.
Then we just pay for what we get.
Then we're done. That's that eight thousand part?
It's both of them.
Okay.
Both, both are listed as fixed fees and I've asked them and they verbally said they would accept hourly with a maximum not to exceed.
And, was that yours? Was that it?
Uh, numbers.
On five, I had a question on seven.
Number seven, I can call Pete Franks if needed.
I don't think. But the question I had is, some of these projects for the various buildings had an allowance in there?
Yes.
And the allowance always says subcontract self-perform. Is, is there gonna be any issues with timing on self-performed work? Are we gonna be able to complete this thing on a time, on a timely, in a timely manner to get our.
Meet the grant guidelines.
Grant guidelines.
I feel yes, we should be able to meet our guidelines.
But I'm saying there's enough of them where it's up to the owner to do some self-performed work. So there's a fair number of these allowances. We just need to make sure that we make the time schedule.
I would agree. And that'll be up to Pete Franks working with those property owners.
And I had two questions on this very same two, so I'll stay on seven. Where it says vacant, the owner's just going ahead and paying for it anyway, even though the business is vacant, I'm assuming, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then on, back to Wayne Slowfield, number five. Was water and sewer gonna be two separate prices?
Yes.
Good enough.
And street, three separate prices.
Well, yes, but I wanted, those two broke apart for sure. I was just curious.
Well, you're gonna get them all broke apart.
Okay.
Water, sanitary, storm, and street.
Good enough.
Motion to approve consent items.
For, for me.
Are we done?
Yep.
Motion to approve consent items, one through seven.
Second. We don't have any resolutions, though. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We're gonna move on to action item D1, Kellon Development Proposal Concept. On January twenty-sixth, Planning, Zoning met and reviewed Bruce Kellon's Development Proposal Concept. Attaches the concept drawings. Planning and zoning improved the overall concept with consideration for a future through avenue instead of a cul-de-sac and a future street at the south end. And then we're here to talk about it.
I'd like to speak to, I represent the city council at the zoning meeting, and I'd like to at least speak to what I picked up from the zoning board, because this is a different issue than what we had before. And I think they were, they voted and approved the concept. But I think they were uncomfortable that the developer was saying that he was not gonna plat it. And I'm just want you to know that they were hesitant on that because the, the next step normally would be for somebody to come forward with a preliminary plat. And then the zoning board can look at setbacks and drainage and all the issues that they're authorized to, to work on. So that was their discomfort. And so I, I'm sure other people have other opinions. And Clark, you were there to, I'm not misrepresenting what was the feeling.
Not, no, we've said so far, no, not what you've said so far.
Okay. And, and they also were concerned, as they mentioned, that the street not be a cul-de-sac next to it. They wanted through streets, so.
So Ken, you may have just answered my question, cause I was actually surprised to even see this back here with just a concept. But typically, it doesn't get to council level on a concept because they bring the full plans back to planning and zoning before it comes to us with the subdivider or with the.
That's not necessarily true, cause they have approved concepts and the city council has approved concepts. But nothing moved forward till the ground was platted. But we, we have approved, I think, the one out there on, by corporate.
Well, I think we saw preliminary plat. Well, corporate was before me.
Yeah. We, we have, I think the council has acted on, on this before in that order, but it always has come down to a preliminary plat.
Cause I've always just seen either preliminary plats or a full plat.
That's when things start moving forward, when you have a preliminary plat.
The one thing that I'd like to interject is during that P and Z meeting, which I did sit in on, one of the members of the board brought up that he did not feel that this is even possible because it has to be plotted, because it is the third split. And I wouldn't be saying this, I, but I did go up to the courthouse today to verify that. And this is a forty acres and this is the third split. And it's not, you can't do it. It will be kicked out at the auditor's level. It'll be kicked back to you at the auditor's level because it's a third split on forty. And I'm just checking so that we don't get so far into this and waste a ton of time debating to find out we can't do it.
Oh, I, I appreciate you, Clark, there. I got a question on the third split. City owns the right-of-way? I got a question to ask you on the third split. If I plot, and we talked about this, if I sell that piece of parcel to it, why does it, if I don't plot anymore of it, why does it have to be more plotting of it?
Because you're splitting, as I understand it, and once again, I went up to the auditor's office today, I believe the name was Kalis sold to you?
No, not Kalis.
Karli.
Karli sold to me. Kalis sold the other hundred and twenty-five.
Okay. Karli sold to you?
Yeah.
That was the first split. Anytime you, you're gonna, you're gonna break off another hunk, it's, it's the third. And on forty, it's either Iowa code, Plymouth County, and/or city code says that on the third split, it has to be plotted. So I'm being told that you can't even do it? Like I say, I'm, I'm just trying to find the facts here.
Hey, I got a good question because, because a lot of grounds, like our, we don't plot that development. I did the KNS development. There's two parcels under two parcel. I say there's, we have that on a three-phase deal too. The other two have not been plotted or nothing. We just plotted that first section. So can we sell one lot out of this as one plot? Why do I have to put five, three more plots into that thing?
Bruce, you mentioned that you had talked to your attorney about this at P and Z and I would sincerely encourage you to have him review that. I, I, I'm, I'm not gonna give that kind of advice, but for, but because, like I say, when I went up to the auditor's office today, one of the ladies helped me, and I just wanted clarity, and she said, it cannot be. And I, with the legals, the wheres, the wherefroms, the who can, how can we? I, I, I have no idea. I'm just being told this is a forty. It's already been split once. When it gets split again, it's gonna get kicked back at you. And it, it'll have to be done then.
As a full plot?
As, yeah.
But we don't plot, am I, just correct me on my wrong, what I'm saying here. We, on the KNS, that's, thing's been split, ho. I can't tell you, three, four times now? For sure, four times. Probably more than that. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, it'd be split five times.
I believe.
So we have not plotted that whole thing. So am I wrong about that?
Well, when Pat originally did that, he, he would've planted the two end pieces, which is what, sixteenth and twelfth or fifteenth and twelfth, and left the center section.
And Lancaster did the one on Sixth.
On Sixth, running up from the football field.
Right. And you sold a parcel off of the street on the other side. I know what you're saying. I'm just saying.
I can't answer that question.
I thought when Pat came to us, he's plotted the whole area. Didn't he have a plan for the whole area when he came to us? Because that's why we ended up putting in some of the.
Exactly.
Storm sewer and some of the water and sewer to the outline because he was gonna have the middle.
The football field.
Be a football in the middle or something and be just one lot. So I think it was plotted fully with Pat. I don't know if that plat carries over. I assume the plat carries over and can be modified. But my thought, and maybe I'm wrong, tell me if I'm wrong, is I think Pat did the whole section.
We did the whole section on a preliminary plat basis, but a preliminary plat is revocable by either party. The person doing the plat or the P and Z in the city.
Okay.
So a preliminary plat in some breath is not meaningless, but it certainly doesn't, it doesn't get locked into the record. Only a final plat gets locked in, so.
Well, and KNS, you, that you had a preliminary plat on all three phases.
Correct.
So that we could see and, and fire chief could see how that was all going to lay out. And then you just did a final on that first phase that you're working on now.
So you're, so you're thinking that this is a concept, we need to get to the preliminary plat to have it be okay? Or do we have to actually get to a final plat?
Well, I thought P and Z need to come, had to make an, had to have an approval of the plat before we even consider.
Preliminary or final?
They do both. They do the preliminary first.
Just and then, and then a final.
And then the ball gets rolling at that point. It's because of setbacks and everything have been agreed to. And then when it comes down to the final plat, then it's legal on that and we vote on both.
And I, and I believe on Kellon, on Kellon right now, the financial commitment is with, with KNS. Excuse me, with KNS, the financial commitment is with KNS and they get a partial rebate back when a house is completed. And the attempt there was to provide some affordable housing. So I think we got a different situation there, but we, I'm assuming we had an approved plat.
Well, my question is, can, can a preliminary plat, can he sell a lot off a preliminary plat or does it have to be a final plat?
Can I answer that?
Clearly final.
Okay.
If you need to plat.
Okay, but.
And, and the question is, does he need to plat if he sells two acres, three acres off of this forty? We're saying at the courthouse, there might be somebody that says he's already got a problem.
Yeah, Clark's research.
We got a problem.
Makes it appear that there's a problem.
I, I did take, if we wanna call, if we wanna call him.
No, because I, I don't wanna get into a he said, she said here because this is just a council meeting. But I think, but Bruce has got an attorney that's actually looked at it too and doesn't think he's got a problem.
Well, the question is, I'm not gonna, when we go back to what we're saying here, I know I put this in three phases and that's probably wrong on my part when I do that. If you look at one and two, I think you guys all have a copy of this, correct?
Right.
Well, I can sell a parcel of one and two off as four acres. And I could plot that out as those four acres. Correct? I don't have to do a, I don't have to do a development on the whole, we did it right now on the KNS. I can tell you how many pieces of ground out here that are the same way that we split forties off. My dad did one, this is, this is a state code, right?
I, I don't know. I, I've already said, I do not know whose code we're doing.
The basis of it is state.
The State of Iowa code.
Yeah. And we've done that, I've seen my dad do, plot out two separate pieces on a thirty acres, plus have the city right up the road right of way on that besides. So this is not something that I would say is new. I agree if I, and I probably brought that wrong to our attention, that I'm gonna plot one through five. I'm gonna sell one and two and make that a preliminary drawing as that, as one plot there. And then three, four and five will be added on to that at first phase. Wrong on my part how I did that? Probably.
Okay, well, here's another, here's another issue, just, I mean, you know, it sounds like there's some research to be done and with regard to the plat and everything. Personally, I for one am not in favor of, at this time, spending city tax dollars doing a seven hundred and fifty foot road for a driveway when there's, when you have three lots over off of C thirty that already has road to it. So just so you know where I stand, I don't want there to be any confusion.
No, that's understandable. I agree with what you're saying. That's why when he came to me, he looked at his, where he could build his house and he wants to build his house up on top of that hill in more of a sense and kinda build over. If you look where he's designed, I understand where he wants to build. And that's, I have no problem with that part of what you're thinking there. I mean, and that's where I go back to him saying, is can we get a street up there? That's a lot of ifs and all these things we do. But I do know is, what we talked about before, and I told it to you guys before in the first council meeting, and I've told it to the P and C, I'm not, I don't want to plot this. The cost of plotting all this upfront and doing everything upfront is too much money for the return I'm gonna get on these lots for what I'm returning. It's different than when I plot at the K and S or other developments. When you take an acre and you split it out in, in three different parcels or two different parcels. And when we look at something like this, you're taking two acre lots. Very few people are gonna go out and buy a two acre lot. And yeah, if one and two is sold, is three, four and five sitting there as a preliminary plot? Yes, it is. If someone would step up and wanna buy three from me, I can feasibly look at and say, hey, we can move forward and do three, four and five and cover my costs and move forward with this. If I had two people that come up to me today and say they wanna buy three or four or five and he wants to buy one and two, then I would move forward on that too.
See, and I guess, you know, from your standpoint, it doesn't make financial sense to plot it out because then you start the countdown on the ten years where your taxes will go up. Instead of being at farmland, it would be city rates. Well, likewise, the tax revenue that a city would receive off of one property, even if it was a million dollar property out there, we aren't gonna make up a portion of what we'd have to spend on that road to get that done. I mean, it would be such a small little portion and probably over a twenty-year period and we wouldn't even have the possibility of getting, you know, if you don't plat everything, we aren't going to have additional tax income coming off of the rest of the properties. You know, because understandably, you're watching out for your investment and wanna make everything meet. Well, likewise, it's our job to watch out for the taxpayers' investment.
And water and sewer revenue also.
Yeah.
Scott, what's the process for annexing? Would he have to annex?
It's already in the city.
One through three, or does he have to come in with the whole acreage?
All thirty acres is already in the city.
Yeah.
It's annexed already? Oh, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
And keep in mind, you do have that nineteen ninety-seven agreement for fourteen. So in nineteen ninety-seven, you agreed to install the center twenty-four feet at city expense.
At some point.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess to that comment we said earlier, and that's something I got sitting here and I, to the P and C, and I think I might've said it to the city council before, I do have an individual who wants to build out here. And I'm not building a modular home or something of that nature. And what I'm trying to do here is, is a different, we don't have this in the city of Lamar's. We have a few areas of this, but not to the level of what I wanna build up here. And the reason is, I'm trying to protect something from me down the road to build here. And I think I've told you guys that before. So if we pass this up, where does he go to build in Lamar's? Does he move out of town? Does he move somewhere else? And I can understand your point of the cost of this, but we do have a tax. We will get a tax return or tax revenue off this area. Let's say you put the streets in in two years and you don't build there, there's no tax revenue coming from that street cost there already. You're gonna build a street there for, to get to point A to point B without no houses there now. Yeah, am I ahead of the cart here with doing what we're doing here? Yes. But the intent was to build that street down to eighteenth, Fourteenth Avenue down to Eighteenth Street. So to give a tax revenue base here to start with this and bring something different into Lamar's, I think it's something that I think we need to look at as citizens in Lamar's. But also is, and I, my part, how far do I wanna go as far as developments? Do I wanna develop the whole phase, like you said? Is it cost there? I just talked to the developer right now and I won't mention his names, but he sold a lot of his lots and he's right now to the point of what he's got left. He's ready to start pushing the lots because his taxes are gonna start hurting him now. And that's the biggest problem we have as developers out here, me included, because I've done this, is our tax base. We tax something on a piece of ground that's still gonna be agriculturally farmed without even plotting it, but yet I don't get a tax base on it in ten years. It's gonna kill me if I don't have a lot sold. And these lots will be taxed quite high, you know, two acre lots in the area. So I understand your point of that, but you gotta understand the part of the developer and that's a problem we have with this tax delay. It always goes back to taxes.
Yeah, on the other hand, with only one lot of assured development at this stage, I have a concern for our costs, the city's costs, for water, sewer, street. I mean, it's a risk for us.
And in the past, on developments that we've worked with, you know, there's more of a cost sharing between the developer because the developer has, you know, several lots that they're looking at making money off of. So whether it's like we did out, what is it, Dogwood or something, Schuster's out there crossing the track. You know, he paid for half of that street that goes through there. I mean, there's, there are, there's usually more than what you have in your proposal as far as what will you as the developer kick in besides just saying, hey, let's get, so I have access to the top of the hill up here so I can sell this property.
Well, and understandable to that because, you know, you look at this, and I do agree with you on the tax. We will pay for the sewer and water of development of those street, of the areas that are gonna be sold, one and two as of now. The street was, I think, when that property was bought, was the city agreement to be paid for that street, correct?
As I mentioned, nineteen ninety-seven, the center twenty-four feet. We typically put in a thirty-one, so the three and a half foot curb and gutter on each side would be special assessed.
Right, but that, that's to be done when we need it.
It's a hundred percent your choice as council.
When we have the money available.
As to when you wanna put that street.
If we wanna wait and apply for a grant, whatever, you know, if we need STP funds or whatever.
Can I make a suggestion that is, can Joe do the homework on this and see if we can even do it? See what's gonna be.
Wait, why Joe?
Why Joe?
Yeah. I mean, it needs to come from the proposed developer. It's his property. He needs to determine what he can do.
You're right, but he's saying he has an attorney who has said he can do it. And I'm saying that the courthouse is saying he can't do it. One of the P and Z members brought this up and I thought, you know what, I'm gonna go up and investigate. Took me three minutes to walk in there. They flipped open the book and said that he can't do it.
Do you have to take a plat to the courthouse?
What's that? No, you look at a parcel and you say, this is a forty, it's been split once.
If you plaid it, you take that plat to the courthouse for approval?
Absolutely, absolutely.
If he plats it, he finds out whether he can do it or not.
Each lot as he sells. I've done those kinds of things where you've taken a forty acres and you want to plat two acres out because you got three owners in that forty. You just plat that two acres?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's not, it's not our job. It's not Joe's, on city dime to figure out if this'll work.
The water and the sewer.
Furthermore, I think we need a, maybe a definition clarification. Bruce is talking about not doing a full-fledged subdivision plat. So that is taking a parcel of land and dividing it in lots and blocks. And so, given the drawing we've got before us, that might be lots one through five inclusive. It's still plating when you sell, even when he sells one lot, if you're breaking it three times. But when there's not infrastructure that the developer needs to do, somebody else is gonna do it, i.e. the city. Then a very simple, and Joe was talking about a very simple plat of survey is historically accepted by the auditor's office. Many of them get done all across Plymouth County and all across every county where a surveyor simply files a plat of survey for a two acre, four acre parcel. And that is in fact the plat. It's even called that. A surveyor will call it a plat of survey. Now, that's to differentiate it from a final plat of a subdivision. They're kind of two different things and yet an auditor's office will accept it. Much, much less cost than a full-fledged subdivision plat.
Are you talking within city limits as well as rural?
No, I'm just talking in general. We've done, or you've had forty acres and now you've got a son that's got ten acres of it and you got a neighbor that wants another ten acres to build, you do that survey and go in front of the county building. But that's been done in Lamar's, John.
In the city limits.
Yeah, it has. So I think it can be done. It's still a plating, but it can be done. It doesn't require a full-fledged subdivision plat where multiple lots need to be part of that plat. It's called a minor subdivision, quite frankly.
Water, water and sewer is already to the little symbol C thirty on the map, right?
It is.
And on the south side.
So we don't have any cost there, the citizens don't have any cost there. We just have for the street. That's what we're talking about. Is that a true statement or not?
You would have it for the street and then what did you state for the sewer?
You're gonna have it for the street and then from up, you're gonna have the cost of that up across lot three. And then from two and, two and one will be paid by me.
Right, we gotta get it to the corner of lot two.
Two, to the end of lot, you're gonna run it to lot one because you're not, you're gonna run through for future development, I'm sure.
Okay. And you're gonna pay the sewer and water.
In front of lot one and two? Yes.
The extension to get it to there.
So then it's just a question.
From C thirty.
Of what the twenty-four feet is costing for the street for seven hundred and fifty feet.
To answer your question though, before you asked me, am I paying for this from C thirty to lot two? No, I, not till that lot was developed.
We, he will pay for it, but on a deferred assessment. Just like when we brought it over for Allen's zone, we paid for it to that part. And if somebody builds across the street from three, four, they will pay for that.
But we're gonna, we're gonna be going past lot two to get to lot one.
No, lot one and two, he wants to buy. He first wanted to buy one and he came back to me after I showed the drawing. He said he wants to buy both of those in a sense.
So we just gotta go on the side of three.
Who's gonna pay for the sewer and the water mains to lot two then?
Okay, let me describe that. The first two hundred and ninety feet, because that's the north-south depth of lot three.
Correct.
So I'm gonna talk in footage. The first two hundred and ninety feet, Bruce will pay it, but not until such time that a lot and block subdivision is plotted. So it will be a deferred assessment on two hundred and ninety feet.
Which could be forever.
I agree. Could be forever.
And that's my concern about flat.
The next five hundred feet will be paid for right away.
Yes.
Because lots one and two are gonna be sold under a one parcel basis to the party he's got. So that five hundred feet will be paid for immediately.
And yet if we required a traditional subdivision plat, and I do understand the difference. I had a plat of survey done on my house, one property, versus the plat of a subdivision. If we had that required, then the odds on what's listed on here is three, might be called two now. The odds that that would be done within the next ten years and sold or built on go up exponentially because then he, as the developer, Bruce is looking at a tax increase. So he's gonna be more apt to push that than if it's just deferred until whenever he gets around to selling it. That's my issue with not having a full plat when the city is being asked for a major investment.
Okay, so that's one.
Now, one other complication is this subdivision is on one side of a public street, that being Fourteenth Avenue. There's another parcel on the other side. Chapter three eighty-four of the Iowa statute allows fifty percent to be paid by the party on the west and fifty percent by the party on the east. The east is not willing to plat at this time, therefore that will be indefinitely deferred also. Does everybody understand what I, so?
That's water and sewer.
That's water and sewer. The nineteen ninety-seven agreement on the, on this street makes the permanent pavement city cost.
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet. The curb and gutter, three and a half foot on each side of a thirty-one foot street would be special assessed to the corresponding side of the street. You wouldn't have to put it on the east, so that cost could be delayed. You could put it on the west and that could be picked up by the party that's buying those lots. Or don't do it at all and do it like you did with Marty Pippet's addition. I talked to Rex about this, the asphalt option.
And we've done it on Mahogany.
And to serve North Greenwood addition that the three of you live in, we went with asphalt fully from north of Willow Creek Bridge all the way out to the subdivision. And we did that so that some future day, we would put the permanent slab up on top of it. And none of that was special assessed to the adjoining property.
Twenty-four feet, it doesn't say how it's supposed to be built as a street. It doesn't say it's concrete. It doesn't say it's asphalt. It doesn't say what it is.
Nope.
Okay. Do we have any good number that you wanna give us for what that cost would be for seven hundred and fifty feet of, let's say, asphalt, just for an argument of state?
Do you want an asphalt bid for?
I want an asphalt bid and I wanna know if it's fifty grand or a hundred grand.
Okay, continue talking to me. I will get it for you.
You're gonna have to lay a base in there too.
Huge parts are gonna be grading, surface prep.
Understand, but.
Surface prep and grading, that was all covered by the ninety-seven agreement that that would be the city's cost.
So, and I'm just asking to make sure we get all the numbers out regardless of whether we can or can't do it, regardless of whether we're gonna have one lot or five lots. We still gotta know what all the facts are so we can keep having this conversation and get things built.
Can I say one more thing? Delaina, I don't know if you were here at the first council meeting or not on this discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, when we just, it was like a hand drawing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I go back to what we've shown here in this one and two. If you would take that development and I would develop it into like K and S or some other developments, you usually get about three lots per acre, give or take. Can be four, can be two and a half when outside you put them. Let's use three as an example. There'd be six lots up there if I did it on a normal basis, okay? If I wanted to develop that area and did six lots in that area, the amount of, you know, the two hundred and ninety foot of sewer and water that you guys have to pay for until I would sell lot three, there's no more difference than if you look at, from C thirty always to Allen's addition, they have roughly, I think there's eighteen lots up there or something like that. There's more footage there for what you're getting out of that. Now, the tax base on this is gonna be, one thing I'd like to clarify on this too, these are not elite homes. I don't know where that got brought up, that these are gonna be elite homes. But it's in the daily sentence, always saying elite. People always ask me what kind of homes they are. They're not elite homes. They're gonna be higher cost homes, definitely. I might've said it, but, but these are, these are gonna be higher cost homes. What I'm putting in here to build these homes, these homes are gonna be of square footage levels of twenty-five hundred, maybe in above. The roof lines, all these things, I want these homes to be a higher cost home. These are probably gonna be half a million dollar homes above. So yeah, is it, talk about building one house up? Yes, there is. There's no argument to what you're saying there. But on the other hand of that is, the cost tax base on this is a lot higher than building a two hundred thousand dollar home and having a lot, a lot of, a third of an acre versus having a, you know, two acre lot or something like that nature. So the tax base is higher on this and I understand where you're coming from for the cost of that.
Yeah, well, and I guess, you know, one of my major issues besides the length of the road, which, you know, it's one thing if we are going to be putting that in, you know, are taking the time to apply for whatever, you know, matching funds we can get from, you know, road use, STP, whatever the case may be. So, but even that aside, I guess one of my major issues when I go through your list that you sent along with this is, it seems to me everything is city, 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 city.
Well, the city was, and I was told that they were gonna put the street in eventually. So like I said, whether we put it in, whether you put it in now or ten years from now, I look at it as, if someone wants to buy a lot here now, should I give the tax base to you or say, no, I'm not gonna do it till they put the street in and lose the tax base to the city? Personally, if you really want, when I first started this, I don't, I can say I could care less if I sell a lot off here or not because I wanna build my house up there eventually by myself and I think I told you that. But in the situation I'm doing here, I said if we can do this and make it the way I wanna do it, I'd probably do it. But I just don't wanna develop right now because of the cost and that's what we always go back to. So yeah, I'm in a, if the city didn't own that street road through there, would we put a driveway from up there maybe? Probably would, probably a ten-foot driveway for him to drive up there and that would be it. And not have to worry about the city there. But the city owns that property. And so I'm in a dilemma to deal with the city having to own that property.
Well, technically, since you own that whole section, you could do a seven hundred and fifty foot driveway between lots three and four and all the way behind lot one if you wanted.
And then all of a sudden you develop the street and then I have to, and he builds his house off the street.
You mentioned the driveway. I'm just saying.
No, what I'm just saying is to do, if he's gonna build his house accordingly and build the lots, I don't wanna put a driveway in and then try to build everything else around that in a future reference, you know? It just doesn't make, and I know what you're saying.
Right, well, I mean, look at it. It's apparently been in place in the plans since nineteen ninety-seven, so, you know.
Yeah, there's only a few of us that've been there back then, yeah. But we had a good reason for it.
If you go with the subbase of crushings with asphalt on top and what we did in the other two locations, similar to that anyway, you're looking at about forty-five thousand is, would be my estimate of just off the cuff here. And that does not include the grading, but the grading would be separated anyway. If you did that with Portland cement concrete and did not put the curb and gutter on it at this time, that forty-five thousand would mushroom to a hundred thousand. And if you did the full street, thirty-one feet wide with curb and gutter on both sides, that number would mushroom to a hundred and forty thousand. So it's dimes on the dollar, not, not a total savings. However, contrary to that statement would be that whatever you did today, similar to what you did on Mahogany or on two hundred street for Marty Pippet's addition, all of that is an asset for the future when a permanent street would be put on top because now you have an improved subgrade and an improved subbase. And so that forty-five thousand is well spent, is all I'm getting at. And none of it's lost for the future.
Now, when you say crushings, that's basically gravel, right? Like fancy gravel.
Crushed concrete, yeah. But in a lot of. Crushed concrete, yeah, but a lot of people would call it gravel.
Can you just leave it as a gravel road?
That's an option.
I'm just asking because, you know, you got 45,000 with the asphalt on top of the crushings. What if you just stopped with the crushings?
If you stop with the crushings, you only got 10,000 spent.
You just stop with the crushings, you only got 10,000 spent, is what you're saying? And if you add the asphalt to it, it's not 45?
No, the 35.
Or 35?
Well, let me ask you this.
For a total of 45.
But that's, if you're, if you do 24-foot road.
That's 24-foot wide.
Yeah.
But it's.
Center part.
Going with that thought, then if the city, and I'm gonna get some frowns here, but if the city would agree to put some water in up to that and build a subbase road, which is basically this crushings at $10,000, would you be willing to say, put in a septic for now? As long as that septic is facing what would be 14th in the future and could be hooked up to city sewer if and when the time came?
Everybody up here wants to see development, I think. I mean, I'm not gonna speak, you know, we wanna see development, but it's got to make dollar sense for the city.
And I, and I agree with you. I got a question, I'll go back to Scott here, if you verify from correctness. 10,000 for the crushings, if you put blacktop on top, it's 45,000, correct? And you're saying is, if we just put crushings up there and they, and forget, just bring the water to us.
Put gravel road in.
Yeah, put a gravel road in and then just bring water to us and then have him put a septic system in? There's two questions to that. One is, how long is he exempt from putting a sewer system in when you bring it up there?
He's exempt till we get sewer by there, but, but we're exempting from putting the cost of a sewer because you're not giving us any future, you know, your future is two years, 25 years when somebody might wanna buy more lots, so we need to watch our investment.
No, and I understand that, Clark. I'm saying is, is if, if he puts it in and also next year you put the street in, he just stuck $20,000 in a sewer system, he's gonna hook up to this, or do we put exemption of him to put in there, he has a 30-year clause to hook up to that or something? That would probably, I shouldn't say, I shouldn't speak for him, but he might look at that part of it somewhat, you know what I mean? Uh, because that's a major expense to put that in, and also next year you come in, put it in, and you gotta put all that cost into it and then turn around and hook up another line from your house all the way back out to it. Now, if the city wants to bring it to his house and hook it up, I would say, yeah, if you guys wanna pay for the cost of that getting to the house and he has no cost net, he'd probably say, yeah, well, then at that point, there's no extra cost, you know?
Well, I would say him not knowing, or you not knowing, when we would require that hookup to be is no different than us not knowing when you would sell lot three to get the return on the investment for running it in the first place.
I agree. On the other part of that is, I'll go back to the street. Let's go back to the street and say what we're gonna do here. If you bring sewer and water up there, which will be paid for other than the 790 feet, or excuse me, not 790, the 290 feet, okay? The 500 feet will be paid for by the homeowners or by me, but more likely me, and then passed on to the lot sales. When you look at $45,000 with the street up to there, I know the cost per lot down there on, on my development down there for the tax return we get on those first three lots, which is, I won't get into those figures, but there's a cost in there that equilates to what you're doing here. Your tax base on this house, on a $500,000 house, $600,000 house, will be equivalent to what those three lots are down there for tax base.
Well, I'm opposed to authorizing a septic tank because if we're gonna develop 14th Avenue, which is in our long-range plan to go up to 18th and loop around in the future, I don't wanna have to go through and put a sewer like we just did through the golf course to get out the little runout there to straighten out a problem that shouldn't have been there in the first place, but.
Well, I go back to what we're talking here, $45,000 is, your tax base will cover that street over a period of time. Uh, you know, you look at the tax, this house is not gonna be a $2,000 tax base. The tax base in this house is, I would say, would be probably up in the 6, 7,000 or higher.
But then out of that tax base, we only get about 42, 44%.
42% of that. Well, 42% of that is roughly figure eight, you know, figure if you're figuring eight or 9,000 or whatever we're figuring, you're roughly taking in 36 to, $3,500 to $4,000.
Probably four grand.
Well, at four grand, take that times 10, that's $40,000. You returned your investment in 10 years.
And then you add on that 290 feet of water and sewer.
I'm paying for that water and sewer, keep in mind.
Not that 290.
Well, the 290, well, you do that a lot throughout the time. I mean, you go through Marty, not through Marty's additions, but you've done that on Allen's additions, you've done that on Kneipe's additions, you've done that on how many additions to get stuff to a certain point?
On multiple lots, Bruce.
Well, I agree with you, but I'm not, I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for a mile-long run here. I'm asking 290 feet there. It's, okay, let's say tomorrow I come in and say I'll pay for the cost of my half of that sewer for 290 feet and the street is your cost already because you're gonna have that cost. I mean, whether I put the house up there or not and you guys put that street and your cost is gonna be there, whether it's in two years, three years, or 10 years from now. But if I don't do this development now and this guy doesn't come through this, will you have a tax base here to, if I put this house up, we entice something to put here though. Enticement is something. To build a house of that nature and put a house up there and someone sees that, you can entice three more sales of lots. Could, not saying it will, and I agree with you. We don't know if that's gonna happen. But we don't have this in La Mars. Until we show something what it is, will we get the enticement? You know, and the guy looks around La Mars, has nowhere to find this, but no one wants to develop it because I go back to cost. That's our problem. And the city understand the cost of it, but I'm not asking for a half a mile road here. I'm asking for 290 feet and I will pay that cost of lot three gets sold for the sewer and water. You guys already bought the property from them to do it, and that's where I go back to what, I'm in a, somewhat in a dilemma here because you own the property of that street, you know? So if I, I go back and say, okay, well, I'll pay for half the street, then all of a sudden down the road you put the rest of the street in and everybody else behind me gets away with this and say, oh, great, you build the road in now, five years from now and they never have to pay for the street? It's an injustice to me when you guys bought the property because of that reason.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not sure if you switched there or, because the street is something that at some point it's in the plans for the city to do. You know, the issue is just doing 750 feet of it and then all of a sudden you get Scott out there trying to do snow removal and so he just pushes it into a railroad stopper at the end, so it's just a great big wall of snow or what? I'm not sure how that works for you, but, you know, so it's, at this point, it's not a through street. You know, we aren't headed somewhere, so I guess that's number one, but then the 290 feet, that's the water and sewer. Not, not a 290-foot street, that's the water and sewer for the 290.
Correct, sorry.
We, not to cut anybody off, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak specifically to this? Or is everybody just enthralled with the discussion so far? Yeah, go ahead, Tom. Just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anybody.
You should come to the podium. I'm on the planning and zoning and I'm not here representing anybody there, but I do have a question about, okay, you wanna put a blacktop street in, does that mean the next guy that walks into planning and zoning and he wants to put blacktop streets in, what am I gonna say?
If we didn't own the street, I don't think we would be having the discussion, but we own the property. I guess that's the problem.
Why don't you just pave it and do it right?
Well, that's what we're.
That's what should be done.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
And then we don't have a discussion when the next guy comes in because you followed your plan, you know? We have a plan we wanna follow. Here, this is the way it's been going for years. Let's stay with it.
Oh, and it has been in at least three comprehensive lines, I think, no? 2000, 2005, 2010, right? Okay.
As far as these taxes go, I mean, you get a percentage of them, as he was saying, so many thousand dollars, but that has to go over the police department, some of it, some of it goes to the street department, some of it goes to the library, some of it goes to city hall. It goes over everywhere. How much is really left to pay this off, up hidden? And you're not looking at a short-term payoff. You're looking at a real long-term payoff. I mean, that's, this common sense is just gonna be pretty thin by the time you get to paying back. Many times I go to the bank and borrow money to buy something, to do something, boy, they lay it out on me all the time. Oh, this don't look very good, you know? Look at the payback. You always gotta look at that a little bit too. I'm a taxpayer. And that's what, basically, I'm talking about. I'm a taxpayer. I'm not a planning and zoning guy today. And that's my question, so. And as far as, we've got a couple of blacktop streets in. I think we justified the one north of town because that would be the easiest thing to repair if a flood came and took it out. Less cost. I think at the time when that was discussed, that was the idea behind it. So, I know, we all like to see development, but sometimes you gotta sit back and think about all the cost. It's really expensive.
Thanks, Tom. What does 290 feet of sewer and water cost? And another concern I got is I don't wanna be down the road here two years and say, well, there's gonna be more development to the south. We, we should put in an eight-inch main instead of a two-inch main, for instance, you know? What are we gonna put in for a size of a main? Are we gonna assume that there's gonna be?
We've got a major main at that C-30 right now. It's a pretty good-sized one there.
A little difficult to see, but if you see that orange line going across right by that label of C-30, that's eight-inch. And then the main, the water main that's dashed.
Is eight-inch.
That's eight-inch.
So we've got a lot of service right to the edge, John. I don't think we.
Anything less than an eight-inch sewer and a six-inch water, then no longer can be considered a main? It would have to be a service line only?
Well, if we went back to the, to the septic and put in like a two-inch copper line to the northeast corner of lot two.
Yes, service line could be extended down there as opposed to a main.
Because, you know, like I say, we may want a 12-inch main down that street in the future.
Uh, yeah, good point, John. I think we have 12-inch along 14th Avenue going north.
What is 12th Street? How big a main is that?
12th Street is eight-inch.
They're both eight-inch.
They're both eight-inch?
They're both eight-inch.
Well, based on what I know.
I think you're, I think you're right in the 15, without a lot of extras, John, just the main. Around 15,000 to 16,000 would get water and sewer up that 290 feet.
Get both of them?
Yeah.
Scott, have we entered into a contract before with anybody on this type of development or it was kind of new and sketchy? I mean, would Bruce be willing to? I think the big event, the thing that ties everybody's mind up in the cost is how long it will be before anything else will get developed. And if you would say, yes, I'll, I'll plat it within 10 years or something, something that we could have in writing, that might ease some of the questions we're having on cost.
And as far as, you know, not plating, that, that's a huge amount of property tax we don't collect with an unplatted area too.
Even if proposal says development, I would change that a little bit to, if, if we were to do this, we would need a development agreement, Ken? And we've got a number of those with a number of parties. We have it with Steve Schuster on Dogwood, first edition by K-49. We have it with the Dogwood Industrial Park with Steve Schuster. We've had it with several others.
Didn't we have one with KNS?
Uh, we had one with, thank you, KNS.
I mean, it's not a foreign concept.
Yeah, it's not a foreign concept at all, and I would propose that we would need to get all these different details in writing and state who's gonna pay for what and, and at what timeframes.
That was the point I was trying to make. We need to get, sit down and, you've heard the council's view and you've heard some citizens' view and, and see how much of that we can get into a contract to, so we could move forward.
Yeah.
Or not move forward, one or the other.
And I think we need to also resolve Clark's issue that he found out at the courthouse, at least find out if it's an issue or not an issue.
We could do some more extensive search on that.
Yeah, make sure it's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, make sure it's not kicked back.
Fire chief wants to know how you turn a fire truck around.
I'm not too concerned about that. My concern would be a half a million dollar house with no fire hydrants.
I was wondering.
What's he gonna pay for fire insurance compared to what the rest of the city pays? You know, and, and we talked about that with Crescent Ridge too. Now, if you're gonna do it, do it right, and let's keep our insurance rating the same so me as a taxpayer doesn't pay more in fire insurance because we do something in a part of town that doesn't mimic the rest of town. Or the guy that's moving in there has to pay twice as much in his fire insurance as the neighbor because of water mains and things like that too, so. And just feasibility for us, if I've got that size of a house out there, I'd like to have water supply.
What is, what is the footage to the house? I mean, what's the parameter that you're looking at in your concern?
Well, when we, when we look at that in a residential, we're looking at every 500 feet for a fire.
500 feet, okay.
In a residential area, and what I have to look at there, Clark, is, okay, if he's, if his driveway's 200-foot long to the house, I've gotta take that into consideration once we get to 14th Avenue. So, we'd be looking at putting these hydrants in, you know.
Couldn't you put a hydrant at the corner of C-30 and the future 14th Avenue?
There's one there.
Well, then you're within.
There's one there.
Then you're, then you're covered.
But then if I do a street 790 feet south and his house is on that.
But you're not. You're only going 290.
290 feet.
Basically say 300.
Okay, and then how far back's his house at?
Well, the lots, you know, I'd say you're covered.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. I'm just saying for future, if we keep going south, you know, we gotta make sure we got a water main up there.
Yeah. I assume that we'd run a main big enough up there so we could continue the main. It makes no sense to put a, a small pipe up there and then have, come through back with a main.
Clarification, the 15, 16,000 for the sewer pipe and the water pipe, 290 feet, all of the three standards we go by, 10 state, DNR, and EPA, none of them would require a manhole in that section, none of them would require a fire hydrant in that section. Where they would occur is in the next 500 feet in front of this new home. So, it's gonna be a little more expensive there, but less expensive up north. So, just so I say that.
But we're only paying the first 290 feet.
Exactly, yeah.
And Bruce is gonna buy some fire hydrants.
We're, we're only, we're only paying.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
We're paying, we're paying for the 290.
For sure was, for sure was.
Either side, they're developed. So it's a temporary investment.
We're paying for it.
But we're paying for it. But that's, that's the point, is that all these little things, the city is paying and eventually, when those lots get developed, those people are gonna pay back for the water and sewer. But somebody's gotta kick in the money on the front side.
Yeah.
And it's the same kinda thing on the street. Whether we put in the concrete, proper street, whether we put in a 10-foot driveway or whether we put in a 24-foot asphalt, we gotta decide which one of those is, the city's gonna pay first and then the city's gonna try to get back over time, what makes more sense.
If we put in an aggregate road to start with, that's a good base for anything you're gonna put in later.
Can I, 'cause I will, we're gonna get on the subject again. I'm sure he, this owner, I would say he would not wanna drive on a gravel road and I bring that up to your attention in a way, so that is an issue, so I would say he probably wouldn't wanna get in there because, you know, as well as I do, if I'm a live, but I drive gravel just a few times during the day and my garage is a mess all the time, so. And these guys don't want that. I think they want a hard surface road, so just to.
We don't, we don't, we don't have a gravel road in the city limits to my knowledge.
I wanna comment to Tom Curse's comment. I think he's right on target and we're not trying to do something substandard. But we're actually trying to use his same common sense and do it when it's appropriate to do it. So, when we did what we did for Marty Pippett on the Winslow addition, when we did what we did on Mahogany for North Greenview, that is a preliminary hard surface to get by until it makes greater sense to put in the permanent improvement. Same thing here. The granular underneath asphalt would be setting the subgrade and the subbase for a future improvement up on top of that and, and none of that's wasted. Today's dollars is making the base for what is going to go on to that base in the future. I think it's a good, good method of stair stepping the improvement based on what development is occurring. Why stick out a $140,000 road for one home? The point is, you can stick out 45,000 for one home, especially if that 45,000 is the prelude to what's coming in the future, which is more development and a better road.
Water and sewer was, water and sewer was how much, Scott? 16, you said?
Well, 16 gets it to the northeast corner of lot two.
And that meets the requirements, size-wise?
That would be an eight-inch main and a six-inch water.
Now, getting to Pippett's addition with the finished road surface, that already had a gravel going all the way through to somewhere.
It did.
Whereas this goes nowhere. And I still think that's going to be an issue for our city guys, for our fire guys, for all of that. If we, if we aren't ready to do 14th to the next crossroad, not only do we have a stop with the road, we've got the same issue with a stop with water, which I know we don't like in other areas of the city because there's issues with that, right? If water just stops and doesn't move.
Dead end, it means there are problems.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think, I think there's more that needs to be done than just a concept at this point.
Yeah, but can we have these guys put together a development?
Yeah, but can we have these guys put together a development agreement with some of these things in writing so that then we can say yea or nay to the writing versus yea or nay to continual discussion, which sometimes doesn't result in either a yea or nay?
Including a deferred cost amount for sewer water?
Does it make sense to get that to happen between?
At least see, need to see an agreement.
So, so I'll make a motion that we get a developer agreement in place for this flat. And all I need is a second to try to get a developer agreement in place.
I'll second the motion.
Now, I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay, what, why, what's the point of voting on that? I mean...
Because, because we gotta have something that we're gonna say yes or no to. Oh, if, if, you know, we're gonna put the cost in there, Bruce is gonna say what things he's gonna pay for. Scott's gonna think that based on our discussion, what things we might pay for or are deferred, they're gonna be in a written document that then you can actually look at and say, nope, I hate this thing or yep, I, I like it enough that we should go forward.
Right, no, I mean, I understand what a developer agreement is. I'm saying, why do we even need to vote on the idea of bringing a developer agreement forward? Normally, they just come forward with a developer agreement. We look at it and we say yes or no.
Because this has came to us with different ways than other things have came to us. And I think at this point, we've gotta be fair to everybody in the room that we've got, thrown a lot of hay out there. And we gotta get some kind of an agreement between the two parties, i.e. city staff and i.e. Bruce, including street department, including the fire department and stuff like that, to look at it, to get us something that we can actually then give to the public for ourselves and build on.
It came from planning and zoning to the city council, so I think we have to act on something. And that's what the motion's about, to move it forward.
Planning and zoning didn't act on anything. They acted on a concept.
Well, and that's basically what we're doing. I just wanna keep the process natural like we've done everything else.
I just thought it'd be good to have everybody sit down in these groups now that we've had two council meetings, had time zoning meetings, have some idea about what people sit, where people stand, what the costs are. They can put it into a document. We've done it before with other documents. Then at least instead of this piece of paper that's got some items and some items not and the city isn't nowhere with their fours or where fours or whatever, let's get it down so that we can say yes or no.
Bruce may not like the document either. I mean, it gives an opportunity for both parties to do it.
But I think before we spend the time on the their fours and the where fours, we need to get his courthouse issue addressed.
Not we.
Well, the courthouse issue, the courthouse issue needs to be addressed.
I go back to the statement. We can do this. I don't know where this is an issue because this, I should say, we can fight this in court of law unless two, if one lawyer says yes and one says no then two, but it is.
A lawyer is not saying you can't do it. A, a pure citizen going up to the courthouse and saying, can you split a 40 a third time? And they, the people who, who actually okay it, when it comes across their desk, said, no. I'm not an attorney. I don't claim to be an attorney. I didn't do research. I went in and asked a simple question. Okay, but here's the thing. I can go with your motion, Rex. I can totally go with your motion. If you agree that you'll pay for the sewer and the water to this lots one and two, this one property, and we pay for a quality street because the future's gonna have that, we want a quality street there, I'll look at this as a possibility. But if you're not willing to pay for that water and sewer to get up to this one lot, because you're not committing to any other lots, I, I'm not on board. You're wasting your time on my vote. Because if, if we're sticking that kind of stuff out there, we need something more than I might sell one in 20 years. I, I need something more than that, period.
And you can address that if you look at the...
And the other, the other thing, the other thing that I'm just gonna throw in there and then is, I don't think we can give city dirt away, Bruce. I think we'd be opening up a can of worms. It would be something unbelievable. Because what happens when Joe Blow comes in and says, I need a truckload of dirt. I'll haul it, but I'm gonna take my loader up there and I'm gonna get, you gave it to Kellen. I, I, we're opening a can of worms if we start giving...
And Clark, I agree with everything you're saying here. I was asked to put something together for you guys.
No problem.
I wasn't gonna give you everything.
Right.
But I have to give you something where I know where I could feel some, I have to put a cost in these lots somewhere where this guy can afford to buy it. And this is where I'm putting these costs in to try to make it where it's feasible for me. Is it feasible for you? Probably not. That's where we gotta sit down and agree. I have no problem with this, I think.
But if you can get water and sewer up there and then you can take it out on your, on your buyer of Lot Three when the time comes, say, I've got costs here. This lot's a little higher for that reason, not up to us. I could look at a street.
I think though, and I'm, I'm sure I've lost control by this time. But, but I, I've sat next to this chair for 21 years, not in the chair. But I, I think the discussion was very legitimate. I, I do think though, that instead of just the conversation, we've gotta have Bruce this, city this, Bruce this, city this, on a lot of items so that then we can legitimately to citizens, which is who or fiduciary we're responsible to and to ourselves, we can say this makes sense or this doesn't make sense. And we can defend it. So all I'm asking for is, yes, I think we need to make sure whether he can or cannot do it, that's a, that's a difference in interpretation right now evidently. But that has to be done first, but then I think we have to pull one of these old developer agreements out of Joe's briefcase and start working with the numbers and working with what we're thinking and, and get Scott to do it, even, even get our street department, our fire chief to put his two cents in, police department put in his two cents, so that we can make sure it covers all the things that we've brought up for an hour here.
And so all your motion is saying is, Bruce, bring back a developer agreement, work with the city, see what you can get, and then we'll bring it back. We'll look at it, may argue some more, because, you know, that's just...
But, but in most cases, most of the cases, we'll have a lot of the numbers in the agreement. So then we're not arguing about how far or how many or what side of the street. We're just arguing whether it makes sense. Call for a question. Got some reasonable?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Amen.
For you, thank you.
At least you know where everybody is.
Also, also part of that, make sure we pursue the courthouse issue.
Well, that's what I said. First item is out there because there's obviously a difference of opinion there.
And, and Bruce, I think, I think you're on to something with this lot size. I know everybody's trying to beat you up. But if you wanted to buy two acres out in the country rural, you couldn't buy two acres and put a house out. You gotta buy, what, five or is it 10?
No, I think you can buy two in the city, out of the country yet, can't you?
I think you can buy one.
I think you can buy one or two.
I know somebody's been trying to do it and I think it's five acres. They won't let you subdivide.
There's a hog barn that go on one of our properties right now. We can sell one acre off.
Yeah, but that's different than building a house.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
That might be.
Okay, if you wanna run, we can get pizza.
Thanks, Bruce. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. That's, that's a lot of stuff. We had to take the time, I think, to do that right. Hopefully, everybody feels we did it right. D2, CBP, number two, leadership committee. Scott, why don't you just give a little overview on that if you can? Well, we're bringing a couple of items forward that the leadership committee met on last month in January and indicated that they were ready to proceed with. And one is, if we need some engineering done, can we use a local firm's slow fell engineering to do that on an as needed basis? So that's as simple as it gets. You, you had under one of the consent items, the master agreement that I negotiated with Wayne Slowfell. So that would be the basis of subsequent amendments to that master that would add a component to it if it was needed. So for example, on a parking lot design, if we needed that done, we would negotiate an amendment for the parking lot and bring it back to you for ratification. So that's number one, is just your consent, a motion, approval of using Slowfell on an as needed basis for some of the components of CBP two. Secondly, and here is a clarification and actually to negate what's in the agenda, and that is, there is no cooperative agreement between the city and the KCs. I thought there was, and that's the way I drafted it up. But in trying to verify that, since the agenda was prepared last Friday, I got further clarification that they don't want to jump in that wagon and handle that.
Okay, so we're not doing two.
Because that, that grassy area, is that all property of the KC Hall?
It's all city.
Oh, that is all city?
All but four feet.
Okay, so four feet right next to the building?
The four feet right next to the KC building is KC's. Everything from that point clear to the postal playhouse is owned by the city. The leadership committee is in favor, and John, you chime in here, but is in favor of turning all of that into a better parking lot.
Correct.
So the issue isn't increasing the parking. The issue is just working with them on the construction.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
KCs are not interested in doing the free labor component for building the...
A city lot.
A city lot.
Right, understandable. And that's why I wasn't sure if part of it was theirs and part was ours and that's where that cooperative was coming in.
100% of the parking lot would be on city property.
So there'd be essentially a four foot, well, either green space or they have like a sidewalk or something right beside the building, don't they?
I would think if the parking lot goes that close to the building, you would wanna fill in the rest with a parking, or excuse me, a sidewalk.
Okay.
Yep. But again, they, they're not interested in, in throwing in the labor component to construct.
But it's not that we wouldn't do it. It's just that we would pay for it.
Yes. So if we do proceed with the parking lot, it'd be 100% at city cost.
I'd make a motion approving use of Showfell engineering on an as needed basis for various project layout and designs involved in CBP two.
Second to John's motion.
All those in favor signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So we're just not gonna move on the parking lot?
No, we're gonna not move on the parking. Is that correct, Scott? Let's just wait and move on it later when we figure it out.
I'd like to bring it back to the leadership committee and find out what they're gonna recommend at this point.
Okay.
We could wait till we move the police station.
And then, the, the, since, yeah, number three's been pulled, but since I'm in charge, I'm gonna move the museum people that are sitting here for the budget discussion, and we're gonna just talk about the museum right now because they've been sitting here, had a, had a wonderful education on the Kellen Edition and at least they could, at least they could sit here and have their, their moment before it takes another hour, which it may take to get to that part. As everybody in the audience knows, when we did our budget workshop last week, trying to hold the line and trying to cut 600,000 from the budget, we had left the historical preservation committee at their 2,000 request, which was actually a $1,000 increase. And therefore, since we were under the understanding that they were going together with the museum on that, we cut the museum back to $6,500, thereby not increasing the cultural programs in total, even though the museum asked for 10 grand. We then, over the last week, have found out many more things, probably many more than we even wanted to know about the situation. But I don't believe the historical preservation can put a copy machine up in the little room that they have that's in the museum.
Right, and I did talk to Judy Bowman on behalf of the museum and she indicated that there are two photocopiers available for public use, that anytime the museum is open, those are available, similar to the library. There's a charge of, I think she said 10 cents per copy. But that the space wouldn't allow for, and what we had increased for the historic preservation was based on their letter requesting that they have funds to purchase a copier because people want to make copies of pictures of their house when it was built or, you know, whatever the case may be that, that they have in there for documents that need to be copied. But that is available at the museum already and wouldn't need to be purchased separately.
So my suggestion with this new information, and I'm sure the people in the audience that are also with the museum will give me additional information if they don't like what I suggest. But my idea is to move the historical preservation back to the 1,000 and move the museum back to the 7,500 and not have any increase or decrease for those. But that'll have a no change effect on the budget as we did last Tuesday. And now we have discussion.
The only thing I might bring up is, you have a letter, page 66A, from the Historical Preservation Society. And the copy machine was just one small part of that letter. I think they were only looking at a $200 copy machine.
But I also believe that the museum is giving them space rent free. Is that, is that the right word? And they are working together as groups to try to do things on a positive manner for both the museum and the historical. So I'm gonna stand by my recommendation to adjust them both by 1,000 to have no effect unless somebody wants to give me great proof as to how to not change it. Anything else from anybody?
Representing the museum want to speak?
Yeah, you wanna talk? Judy, Wayne, somebody?
Anybody.
Okay, okay, well.
So if we all agree with Rex, you're okay then? If we all agree with Rex, you're okay.
I second what Rex says.
Okay, that works.
I agree with what Rex says.
We're gonna, we'll, we'll move that in the budget part. We don't actually have to have a motion.
Right, okay.
But we'll move that in the budget part. So what'll happen is the museum will get 7,500, a match deal, just like was in the past, just like we have for the band, just like we have for the art center.
We'll go back to a thousand.
The historical will go back to 1,000, just like they had last year.
So basically, everything's the same time by 15.
Yep.
As far as dollars.
Yep.
And I just didn't want you guys to have to sit around for a longer time to hear that dissertation.
You mean wish to.
Is that fair enough? But thanks for being in the audience for the Kellen discussion. If these guys from the newspaper or the radio need help on explaining that, I'm sure that they could help ask you guys for some clarification because I'm not sure I could write that.
Bruce didn't use the word elite.
Just to clear that up, right?
More bolstered than I use the same term.
If you put that tape on for an hour again on TV, there'll be a lot of people watching and trying to figure out what happened.
Okay. And the museum people are welcome to stay for the rest.
Right.
You never know what will...
Okay, we're gonna move now to D4, if everybody's okay with that. This is the Plymouth County Lamar's Highway 75 bypass urban renewal area TIF revenue sharing agreement. And this is the motion that sets the public hearing for the discussion we've had on getting rid of the joint urban renewal. We've had the discussion that at least six, I think, city council meetings and at least 12 joint urban renewal meetings. It makes it so it's not so difficult for either Stacy up at the courthouse or us to figure out really. Anything else we need to add to this, Scott, Bill?
I think the only question was that initial payoff comes from where? I mean, I understand that it would be returned out of TIF, but the initial payoff to county.
No, the TIF actually generates about a million three a year. And we're gonna pay a million of that million three to the county for two years.
Okay, so it is actually generating itself.
So it doesn't have to create anything out of our own pockets. It just creates it over the years.
Since the last meeting though, Rex, we had a conference call with the county and the city and John Danos and it came to light that the million three can be escalated to 2 million.
Right.
And as such, in June of 15 here, we could pay off 100%.
In one year.
You know, with the, with 100% TIF revenue that is coming to us. So it'll be an in to us and an out to us, and it's done in one payment.
So it's basically like an inter-fund transfer then?
And the county was good with that.
In June of 15.
June of 15.
Motion adopted, resolution 15 dash four, establishing February 17, 2015 at 12:00 PM for a public hearing to approve TIF revenue sharing agreement with Plymouth County.
Second.
Yes and no? Roll call please.
Rex, please.
Yes.
Good shot.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, STP applications. Not gonna read all that.
No.
I asked Scott to bring this up again because these applications are due in a month and, well, this month yet. And just to make sure everybody's still on the same page as what projects are being proposed so there's no surprises when funding is awarded or not awarded and we didn't know about the project.
Essentially, you saw...
Essentially, you saw these, the same listing of projects a year ago, and even maybe a year before that, this has been going on for quite a while, where we get, we're eligible for federal funds, and then we compete with the five counties that are in our jurisdiction, and really, the top three-fourths of that list is already funded, built, and we've been enjoying it for years now. What is in the program currently, and it took two fiscal years, a year ago, excuse me, two years ago and last year, to get it fully funded at eighty-twenty, is that single project listed in the twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty timeframe, and specifically, we got it funded then fully in FY eighteen, as you see by the page. It's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, of which federal funds will come in at six hundred thousand, and we have to find road use tax in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty thousand to match that. So that's FY eighteen, so that's past tense, and it just occurred. So then, I'm suggesting, by what I put in the agenda, that we take the first project and apply this go-around for this month, and specifically, that's February twenty-seventh, is when the applications are due, and so we're looking for your approval on February twenty-seventh to submit on your behalf, Central Avenue from Fifth Street South to Twelfth Street South, and to white-top that. So if you look at the previous one, Central Avenue from Third Street North to Third Street South would be white-topped in FY eighteen, and we would be applying for funds in FY nineteen to white-top from Fifteenth, Fifth Street South to Eight, Twelfth Street South. I haven't done a cost estimate on it, but if I just prorate from a six-block of the previous app to a seven-block of this app, we're probably looking at somewhere in the million-dollar range total, and eighty-twenty, about eight hundred thousand is what we'd be looking at for federal funds, with two hundred thousand coming from local.
So are you thinking that may take two years?
It's gonna be fairly competitive, since we were able to get the six hundred thousand over two consecutive fiscal years just prior, we may not get any this round.
Should Fourteenth be on this list?
Fourteenth, as we know it today, can be, because it's part of the federal aid system, Fourteenth going south of Twelfth Street is not in the federal aid system, not eligible.
Why is, why is a street not or in, why is it, it is or it is not in the federal aid system, that's difficult to say properly.
Only streets that exist presently can be in the system, new proposed roadways that are still ungraded and non-surfaced cannot be in the program.
That's where you go, like, with RISE or something like that, is that?
Yeah, RISE is a state, this is your federal funds, RISE is a state fund, and that builds new roadways on old, just dirt.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah. Now, you can say that you've got a higher level of priority with Twelfth Street, and we could pick one of the Twelfth Street projects.
Well, it makes sense to get Central then, and then move on to Twelfth.
It's pretty hard to argue that Central's not the one that needs to be done.
Yes.
Because that's putting it all the way out to potentially twenty-twenty-five, which is ten years from today.
We probably won't be here.
To get it done, yes, somewhat, even if we're here, we're gonna be really pressured by that.
But I did have, I did have a comment on the, on the project when it moves to that final two down there. I think that, if I get my right street here, Twelfth Street from Central to Sixth Avenue Southwest, to me, that's a lower priority than continuing east on Twelfth Street all the way up to Seventh Avenue East, because that is really in bad shape, whereas going south, we have redone that street fairly recently, and if not, it's too bad a shape.
I mean, going west.
West, yes.
It's downhill, though.
I mean, I know that's not what we're deciding today, but I wanted to throw that in anyhow, because that, that Twelfth Street going east of Seventh Avenue, or Fourth Avenue is in really bad shape, it's an old county road that we patched on, and it's just...
So for the future, Ken, I think I'm hearing you say, is everybody in agreement that that portion should be listed as Twelfth Street South, Central Avenue is at Seventh Avenue?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because we've had water issues, I mean, the curb gutter, everything right there can be looked at.
Well, if you look, if you look at Sixth to Seventh on that street, that's worse than quite a few of the blocks from Zero to Sixth, or West, absolutely, okay? So that's the priority, but both of those are clearly priority, because we, both of them, we've top-dressed, underdressed, covered up, done everything while I've been here.
Well, and it's major, major threat there, so.
Yeah. Well, and I will say this, since we're so far out on funding for federal, we may wanna consider using local funds, road use only, for the piece of Twelfth Street from Central Avenue to Second East, that goes through that small little box culvert, some people call it a bridge because of the sidewalk, looks like a bridge, and it's right by fire station number two, you mentioned that, Clark, and then we don't have the sidewalk on the north side, and I had mentioned to the council in previous meetings, we really have to do the street before we can do the sidewalk, your, I think your priority is let's get the sidewalk done, so I just wonder if that first two blocks, if we shouldn't just knock it out locally.
Well, and that encompasses that area where we had the bumps signed up all summer.
The big bump, the speed bump.
The bumps, the bumps has reappeared three times.
No, it's not at Third.
The bumps at about Third.
It's right out in front of Carlson, I mean, it's, it's right out in front of Carlson.
It's almost closer to the pool.
It's at Second.
Is it?
See?
Yes.
I drive that road, I don't stay on Fourth.
Well, now there's a bump down by Clark School, that is a bump, you know, we got, we got signed all over town.
There's a bump on Fourth Street West.
About two years ago, we needed to patch that box culvert where the drainage comes under, a hole had developed itself right from the surface of the pavement, right into the box, and so we, we had to make a repair there on an emergency basis, so that's further justification that we really should do something with that first two blocks.
So really, what we're saying then, for this funding application for STP, we're saying the second one would be Second Avenue to Seventh.
Second to Seventh.
If you concur with me that we should do the first two blocks.
Do we change that, do we need to change that now, or wait until after, if we end up doing the work with local funds?
Well, we're talking for Second.
We have to apply now, that's the problem.
We're assuming we're gonna do it from Central to Second, on our own.
I think you change it right now to Second to Seventh, and we're gonna do the first two quicker than twenty-twenty-five.
I'm not, where does, where is Second exactly at?
It's on the edge of Carlson's.
The east edge of Carlson's?
Okay, okay, that's good.
Second, Second is, drives right into the, the first drive, we're going into the convention area, or the Y area.
And isn't it to the east of the pool, swimming pool, too?
Yeah, it's on the west side of the pool.
Or west side of the pool, yeah, west side of the pool.
So then, we really only added one block to what you originally had for the second one, so we wanna keep the third one then also?
I think those are, those are the ones we're gonna do, it's just a question of whether we can get funding anyway, and we wanna leave them in the order they are, because we need funding first on Central, we need second on the east side, and then we'll go to the west side. I think the order is right.
Second to Seventh on the second one.
Yeah, I think the order is right.
Just change to Seven.
Yeah. Okay, so we need a motion on this thing.
Motion approving application to STP for the first project listed, for the projects listed under twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-five as amended.
Second.
Got a motion on the second, all those in favor of the motion, sign five percent aye? Any opposed?
All right. You do have to pay attention at this council, you know that, there's a lot of people that have a lot of opinions.
Yeah.
Even on twenty-twenty-five, which is ten years from now, okay. Transportation program alternative applications. CBP two has determined one project consists of extending the rec trail along Key Avenue from Two Hundred to C thirty-eight, and along C thirty-eight to Key Avenue, to the west-right away line of US seventy-five. Everybody got that in their mind?
Yeah.
Okay, staff recommendations allowing the council to authorize application for TAP funds, and official endorsement to maintain and operate said trail for a minimum of twenty years. Since this is a CBP two project, any local match should be funded by CBP two sources.
Is this indicating that when the state was talking about trail further south on down to Sioux City, that, is this going to that location that will be picked up by the state and go further south in the future, or is this just a, a good idea to get up there and get down to that terrible crossing?
Blended answer, yes and no to both of those.
That's very clear.
It's good.
Well, what I'm getting at is, number one, the state isn't doing the original trail, we're trying to materialize a, an entity, whether that's an association or a twenty-eight E, that would actually do that project, so that's number one. This, the CBP two leadership has stated, and included as part of one of their sub-projects, is to extend our rec trail to our southern corp line, and that right now is C thirty-eight in front of Nipco, because that's where it intersects with Highway seventy-five. When the young college of design student was here, he drafted a set of plans that would indicate following a scenic route from where it is now in One Hundred and Eighty-Fifth down to C thirty-eight by following the Floyd River.
That's what I assumed.
Some of you have seen that.
They took it behind the shooting range and that kind of area.
It did.
Yeah.
The sportsman's club.
Okay, so that route still exists, but the CBP two leadership felt that a more direct route, a route that will take less dollars, and a route that the right-of-way is already acquired, would be to follow Key Avenue from Wells Corporate intersection to Nipco, right down Key Avenue. That route goes in and out of city limits, so that's one somewhat issue, because you don't have full jurisdiction of that piece of roadway, from Two Hundredth and Key to a half-mile south thereof, you have control on the west half, but not the east half, and then from that intersection, or excuse me, a half-mile south, you have control on the east half and not the west half, so it switches. But needless to say, the leadership committee understands that, I believe, they feel it should be on the west side, and we should approach the board of supervisors to get permission to put the trail on the west side for that mile from Two Hundred down to C thirty-eight, because then, once we're at C thirty-eight, then the regional rec trail that's being proposed could take it from there to Sioux City, and in the very short term, from that location, the, what was that called, the today route, meaning share of the road route for bikes, would take C thirty-eight to the west, and wiggle all the way down to Sioux City to Hamilton Boulevard, all on existing county roads, so that's in that same plan, and so, and the reason that Key Avenue wouldn't be a good candidate for just share the road is because of, of the narrowness of the shoulder, there's just really little to no shoulder there, and so they'd like to see that piece to be an off-the-road regular trail. This would be one funding mechanism that the city has used historically, starting back in the nineties, it was the first time we used a TAP funding, and we've used it a couple of times since, the last TAP funding we had was for the connection on Highway So this application is also due on the twenty-seventh, it goes to the same TAP committee that I sit on, the same policy board that John sits on, I am asking for permission to submit on your behalf for some TAP funds to assist with that trail.
And there are a number of city slash counties using this TAP funding for trails.
There is a number.
And then, just a quick question, you had said on the west side?
Yes.
Okay, because the trail comes up on the east side, and then, you know, I realize that there is, you know, a crossing point over by the corporate center, but if you're having to work with the county half the time anyhow, why wouldn't you just keep it on the east side?
Okay, well, the trail goes along One Hundred and Eighty-Fifth to Key, then it goes on the east side of Key down to this intersection, and it goes across and comes up to Wells Corporate, you can even see the small line right here, that is the trail. The leadership committee is talking about taking it from this intersection, and we're already on the west side of Key, and taking it straight down, the green is in city limits, so it'd be in city limits for this first half-mile, we'd be outside the city limits because that's on this white area, down to C thirty-eight. This is city limits, this is city limits, but it switches at the half-mile.
Right, but I mean, the only reason that the trail went over to Wells Corporate, at one point, we were talking about the possibility of having kind of a trailhead there, but then that didn't work with their security and everything, so I guess I'm just questioning the wisdom of crossing over, you know, and then if the goal is to get back down to Nipco, why not just keep everybody on the east side of the street, you're gonna have to work with the county on half a mile anyhow, and then you're on the same side as those residences, so then you don't have people crossing Key, I mean, that would just be my, I realize that, you know, if it has to...
Say it be in, in the county jurisdiction here, and city jurisdiction here.
On the first portion. Right, because then, that way, you're, you're by the residences, otherwise, if you've got people that want to get on, then they're crossing, and then crossing again when they come back down and...
The only thing, Delana, is if that shoulder's not wide enough, then you're gonna be negotiating driveways, are you not, roads into that, those subdivisions?
And a deep ditch.
And a deep ditch.
Carries a lot of water.
It's probably premature, really, to determine that until we study both sides, see what's more economical.
Well, that's why I was wondering, for, for the application, do you have to, can you just say along Key Avenue, does it have to specify?
Yeah, not say east or west, whichever.
I can make that a little optional, actually, in the application.
But the dollars might be different.
Right, but I mean...
Might as well max the dollars then on, assuming these...
My fear is, it makes more sense, Delana's suggestion, but my fear is, you'd almost have to put a storm sewer underneath it, because there's so much water running down through there.
Well, I mean, there's a ditch on both sides, so, but, you know, I, I just think that that would bear looking at, because it's just less crossing, and, you know, to, to the, you know, casual observer, observer, it's already on the east side, except for that, you know, little crosswalk area that goes over to Wells Corporate, so.
Motion authorizing a TAP application for Key Avenue Recreation Trail.
Second.
All those in favor, sign five percent aye? Aye.
Motion approving resolution fifteen dash five, officially endorsing that the city of Lamar's will operate and maintain the Key Avenue Recreation Trail for a minimum of twenty years.
Second.
Got a motion on the second, roll call, Bill.
Rex, thank you.
Yes.
Good shot.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Done with those discussions, council, mayor, we'll start with Kenny.
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna pass to Delana.
Just a question, and it's probably nothing we can do anything about, but, Scott, this is why you don't always want to show up for meetings, on Second, you get it right, Avenue, over behind the elevator, where those railroad tracks, you know, we move the snow, and then the railroad cuts, the train cuts a path through there, you've got serious dip issues as you go over that, is there any more snow that can be scraped off the top of that, or it, it just is what it is until the snow melts?
Well, we can go look at it.
Okay.
Get a look at it.
It's just, and I'm sure it's a combination of the snow pushes stuff out, and then people drive on it, pack it down, and it's...
A lot of times, we gotta look our way and follow up, too, and go up top of that about six inches.
Because of that, yeah.
Well, or any railroad tracks there, just because of the fact that if it gets stuck in there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think we have quite a six-inch drop, but it's pretty serious, you know, if you don't know to go...
Off you're going over top of railroad tracks.
Yeah, yeah, that, the one that doesn't have light. Yeah, yeah, that, the one that doesn't have lights on it, right behind the elevator there, so I don't know if there's anything we can do besides just wait for warmer weather.
It's, it's bumpy when it's not got snow.
Yeah.
So that's your problem, is you almost have to...
We'll take a look at it.
This, this is tooth-jarring.
You almost have to turn your equipment and go sideways and push it with the tracks, because that's the only level you're gonna have a chance on.
Yeah.
If you do it like you always blow, it's not gonna work.
Oh, yeah, and I, I...